I was pulling out of the trunk. The bathroom.
How you like that?
Sure.
Blowing in your ear.
You were doing what?
You're blowing.
Okay. We'll reconvene. And it looks like the first thing, Landon and Daryl, why don't you come on up?
Good afternoon. Good to see ya.
How ya doing?
Oh, Daryl.
How ya doing?
Hi, how ya doing?
Okay.
There's a point now for your convenience.
Okay. She's ready to school, so she can.
Right there, baby.
Alright.
Don't get him in the eye. I might.
Can I give a brief overview just really quick? Um, so, the original plan, when we approved the fire station for Pleasant View, was that, um, the property line was going to go, oops, sorry, from there.
All the way down to there.
You need the one with the map? I mean with the...
There we go.
I was trying to scoot it over, whoop, then when I went, okay. Go this way? Like that?
That works.
Okay, I'll stop.
So, it was originally going to go from this corner over that way and then down. Um, but since the Lan- the Lancaster's are wanting to obtain this property that's up in this area, this tree area, to protect their, their view shed. Um, that being said, there is a hundred and twenty foot easement that was platted in nineteen forty, um, when Pleasant View was initially platted, uh, that lies between those two areas. Um, that being said, you know, obtaining that acreage would, um, change the outside boundary of the subdivision. Um, which, you know, at this point, that, that doesn't necessitate, you know, it going to the Planning and Zoning Commissioner, or getting non-opposition letters from all the people in the subdivision, which technically is in, is in this area here.
The whole, the whole town subdivision, right?
Yeah. Um, which as you can see how it was platted, I mean, it, it was platted like a trailer park.
Sure.
So, yeah.
A tight trailer park.
Yeah, there's, there's, I mean, most of these have, I mean, most of these have like four to six...
Lots in them.
Lots in them.
Yeah. What are the, what are the widths on those? Twenty-five feet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Take a bunch of what they want.
Yeah, I'll bet.
So, that being said, you know, um, the reason that we're here is we, I just wanna make sure before we, it's about a half of an acre that would go to Mr. Crane, and about a half of an acre that would go to the Lancaster's. Normally, like, there, there used to be an easement here, normally when we have easements and we vacate easements, um, half of the property goes to each...
Side?
Each side. Um, this is not a...
This one that's all gonna go to one side?
Yeah, yeah.
And Mr. Crane, where, I didn't see his name on here, where's Mr. Crane?
Or Drake.
Drake, okay, I was gonna say. I didn't see, I don't see a Crane on here.
And he, he actually has, in his easement, there's actually a duty tank and a shed.
And there's some, I, yeah, and there's some stuff on the Lancaster property.
Right, it's movable though, it's not.
Yeah.
Right there.
Well, it's movable, but we'd hate to have to. Some of it I haven't seen for years.
Anyway, so that's what we, because we do want, we would like to buy that.
So, who, who owns that property? Is it Sharon Palmer's?
Yes.
Yeah, the, on the other side of that right-of-way.
Yeah.
Now, wouldn't where the right-of-way be her property as well?
Her part, well, they, they told us, right, the, because it's farm ground, it's not...
We, we, when they started the firehouse deal, of course, like I said, our, that was nineteen forty when this was done, and, and mom and dad owned that place that we're living at. But anyway, that's been close to ninety years ago, and there's never been a...
A road.
A road or anything involved there. Anyway, when they started the fire, gonna put the fire department there, well, I, we decided we didn't want the dang fire trucks going right in our back, right to our back.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, so I contacted Sharon about just buying that, which she was willing to do. And then they, uh, have since then have changed the, the fire department's spot at there, so they, they're not involved in that at all.
They're not gonna be involved in it at all, are they?
One of my questions, who pays the taxes on that land now?
Well, I'm, I'm sure Sharon probably paid on the other side of the right-of-way, but nobody pays on the right-of-way.
Huh? It's a public right-of-way. It's, it's actually dedicated to the public, so hence the county has control over it.
Right.
Oh.
Back when they platted out the, the town of, the, the, the ci- city of Pleasant View, when it was platted, they...
Well, I, I was thinking we was told that, I mean, 'cause we offered to buy that, but...
We can't buy it, right, because it belongs...
Well, and I'm not sure how this...
If we vacated, I don't know, I don't know, is there a, for the financial transaction with the vacation of a right, of easement?
Not that I know of.
I don't think so.
I can look into it.
Goes to the property owners, it's the easement's on their land that was there.
Well, then that would be shared.
It'd be half Sharon and half Lancaster.
Right, but we, we was what, I mean, that's kind of been a buffer zone from, from the field and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And it's never been, you know, none of the brush, it's still just trees and brush and... Anyway, we, when we contacted Sharon, well, yeah, she was willing to sell that.
Yeah.
'Cause it's not doing her any good.
Mm-hmm. Not farmable or anything?
But then, it turns out with the county's, uh, planning and zoning thing, we'd have to buy three acres...
Right, that's right.
Out there, 'cause it's not connected to our property.
Oh, yeah.
So, if they vacate that, then we can still buy the, the strip, strip of brush that's down there.
So, what are you proposing, buy the whole strip back there, or just...
Up to her field, up to, up to the edge of her field?
Yeah, yeah, we would, just buy, unless, you know, if, if Drake's want to buy...
Behind theirs?
Behind theirs, that'd be fine, I mean, we're not, but we told her we would buy that whole thing if...
Mm-hmm.
If they weren't.
If they weren't interested, just so she could get rid of it, because she changed what she was selling to the fu- to the fire department.
Mm-hmm.
So that, does that make sense?
So, what would your property line be?
Then our pro- then our...
We're the pointer. Alright.
And so I don't know...
That can't operate. That right there, we bought that property, that belonged to Junior Hollen.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, after he passed away, we bought that, of course, that connected the, well, we are, or we thought, but there's an alley runs right up through there, a twenty-foot alley.
I'll be damned.
'Cause I, when I came down to the courthouse, to the assessor's office, I was just gonna have them connect, you know, put that all under one.
On, on one title?
Oh, no, they couldn't do that, that's an alley, a separate tax bill on that, because there's an alley up through there, and it's...
Sharon would like to, to square up her field, so we would just purchase whatever she wanted, whatever it would take to square up her field back there. I mean, that's what we told her we would do.
Mr. Drake?
And Mr. Dr- right, and if he wants, you know, I, he, uh, the guy that's living there now is this guy's brother, he, uh, Howard owned it, but he, he deeded it over to his brother, so that when he dies, he doesn't have any...
Eighty, eighty something.
Kids or anything, so, so he deeded it over to his brother, and so, um, we told him, you know, if, if they want to buy part of that brush up behind, then that's up to them.
I mean, we're not trying to...
So, are we vacating that easement and an alleyway?
Well...
This and this, and then this alley right here. There's not an alley between, between Howard and us, there's not an alley there, there's an alley right there. Because, because he only owns half of this.
Yeah.
And we own the other half of this.
Other half, yeah.
Should we go up to the other one?
Well, there's a, I have a copy of this on the... So, yeah, so there is, I mean, there have been a lot that has been, um, vacated, not necessarily...
Properly.
They just built through whatever.
But, you know, and I think as, as, you know, Doug can attest, um, public right-of-ways, I mean, once you get rid of them...
So, there's that alley right there.
Yeah.
Well, what happens, John, if we vacated all of those alleyways as well as this right-of-way?
They'd go to the neighboring property owners. We have to have public, we have to give public notice and do a resolution, so you can't do that today.
Have a public hearing, have to have a public hearing.
The warehouse straddles one alleyway, does it not?
Yes, it does.
And the alleyway between, uh, phone company and Jimmy Johnson.
There used to be, yeah, you, there, you can see the one to the south of that, yeah, that goes, you can still see that alley that goes right here.
Move, move to the east.
That's the road, yeah.
That one right there, there's an alley.
Mm-hmm.
You have to make sure there's no public, uh, utilities going up through the alley.
And there, and there's...
Well, and, and Howard told me that there's, um, he knows that there's a, there's a, um, electric right-of-way, uh, because there's a pole right there on the corner of his property, so he knows that part of that is, there's already an easement for Empire Electric or somebody, or some half.
Utility easement of some sort.
Yeah, yeah, for some of that, yeah, there's already, yeah.
Of course, I don't make it turn into Metropolis, like, probably...
It hasn't boomed quite like their plan, has it? Yeah, yeah. The Bureau of Reclamations estimates on all of Monizuma County didn't quite pan out either, but, you know, so...
So, then there's little alleyways, like, is this an alleyway?
Discussion?
You know, you know what they, oh, sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
Well, is this just a discussion today whether, no, see what the, uh...
That's not part of, it must be across the road.
Is this just a discussion today? He said we had to have a public hearing.
To see what to do and how you guys wanna proceed.
Well, I think...
Well, does our planning and zoning, do they look at something like this?
They can't?
Would, would, is it necessary?
Well, I'm a little concerned, like, we don't know where the utility bills are, we, we need to have our ducks in a row before we pull the trigger.
Yeah.
What if there's something hidden there that we don't know about?
Or something that we're...
And I'd like to see Sharon, you know, if she's gonna, I would like to see Sharon here saying, "I agree with that." I mean, I, I think that would only be fair to her.
Well, sure.
She's in Arizona now, she's, I, she, you know, she's hard to get on.
Well, I, I can guarantee you that electric pole may be sitting there, but it's, there's, there's no lines or anything runs up past that, I mean, to the, onto the north.
Yeah.
It is, it stops right there?
Yeah, because it just stops at those houses, there's never been anything...
That's, that's the electric line right there, that dotted line.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, it just has a pole sitting there.
Yeah.
And that...
That's it.
I mean, there's not, you know, one ti- years ago, they tried to, when they was running a pipeline over east, they tried to get people to sign up in Pleasant View to get on natural gas.
Why?
You know, propane and stuff that's cheap then, they didn't need natural gas, so they didn't bother. So, I know there's no gas lines running around over there.
There's phone lines.
There's phone lines?
They're all underground.
And water?
The phone lines are underground?
They have fiber, is this a phone?
Then where are they at?
I don't think we have one.
Well, to our property, they just go across road fifteen point four. That's where they, that's where the phone line goes there.
Well, the, yeah, the phone line runs up along that road there, CC and one. You know, fifteen point four, originally, that used to be Pennell Avenue.
Yes, it is.
Pennell Avenue.
That's funny.
Isn't that good?
Flat book one, page forty-six.
Jill wanted to go through the planning and zoning, and then let LeAnn tell us how, how that turns out, and then set it for a public hearing, if in fact they recommend it.
Probably wouldn't be a bad idea, and, I mean, it's, there's enough, there's enough going on here, I don't feel real comfortable in saying, "Yeah, we can just abandon this and throw this out," and, and not, not that there's gonna be any, anything different come from it, I think it'll probably work out the way you guys are talking about it, but, um, I wouldn't mind to have this, uh, the Planning and Zoning Board look at it and kinda, kinda digest more of it, 'cause it's first I've seen them, and there's, there's enough kinda going on here, I'd rather have them take a look at it.
So, do you want a non-opposition letter from, um, Ms. Palmer as well?
Yeah, and maybe Mr. Drake? Mister, you, he's your other neighbor, right?
Yeah, right, and he's, he was the one who started all this several years ago, he wanted to do this.
He wanted to do it, yeah.
He wanted to do it, but Arvale...
Uh, her land?
Lamb.
Which, which is not even in the...
It's not even in this, it's not even, Arvale's property is not even considered part of it.
Yeah, so no way.
And so, when, when Howard talked to Arvale, he said, "Arvale didn't wanna do it, 'cause he didn't wanna have to pay taxes on part of this alleyway."
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so then, so then Howard just dropped it, 'cause Arvale didn't wanna do it. But then, since then, we figured out that Arvale doesn't have to be part of it.
Yeah, there and there.
Because he's, he's considered farm, and this is considered town.
Now, he's outside of the town, we're saying, you know?
Right, that's right, see, so it's, so, yeah.
So, Jimmy Johnson on both of those properties right there, where the alleyway is, that fifteen point four?
No, the phone company owns right there.
Oh, is that where the tower is?
Yes.
So, they would have to agree?
Right, right there's the phone company, there's Jimmy Johnson's, and an alley used to run it through there, but between the phone company and Jimmy, they've kinda...
Doped over.
Took it over.
You know, people use that CC point one, so I don't know that you can vacate that.
What about this?
Or that one, because that other guy uses that, you know, people use that...
For access.
For a, you know, just, and then, that's a roadway where those trees are, goes that way.
It's a road to nowhere.
It is a road to nowhere, it's a road to the, to nowhere.
I mean, that, when that was the warehouse, you know, they, yeah.
The trucks use that.
Trucks, you know, all the beans and weed in there, but...
Sure.
That's, that's not the case anymore.
Not now.
But that, but that CC point one, people use that.
Yeah.
Sure, that comes up and hooks up the CC and the highway.
Right, right, so, you know.
And people use this right here?
They do, yeah.
All of this?
Well, yeah, I mean, that guy...
Well, we, we use the limit right across on the other side.
The phone company uses that.
To get into our house.
And we, yeah, and this guy uses that, and we use that, um, wouldn't have to, but that is what, uh, what is happening now. Trash people use that.
Are you proposing to vacate the, the right-of-way that's just to the west of Drake's there?
Yes, this right here and this right here.
So, that would then go to that, that one, that right-of-way that's gonna go northwest and southeast and go to the Drake's, and then, uh, is it Lamar?
Lamb, lamb.
Arvale Lamb.
Arvale Lamb.
That would be split pretty much.
Right.
Right.
Split here and split...
However, does Arvale have to have his split if he doesn't wanna pay taxes on it, or can it all go to Drake's?
He could maybe sell it to Drake's if he wants to, but if we abandon it, that's...
Then that's how it would be, okay, because, and, you know, unless Arvale's changes mind, he didn't wanna have to pay taxes on his part of that.
Well, I, I, regardless, we should have, regardless, we should have something in place that says that he is...
Out of it.
Okay, okay with whatever's...
Whatever happens.
Regardless.
Right, was it regardless?
I, I mean, I'm not a expert on these property taxes, but I can imagine that...
Couldn't be a whole heck of a lot.
Well, right.
I can imagine that'd probably break the bank.
Couldn't be too, too high dollar, although I don't know, uh, we had a member of the audience this morning come up to us, and we were, we were in...
Deep.
Deep trouble, deep trouble, brother, deep trouble.
So, if there's any other, I mean, if, it makes sense to have the planning, zoning, look at all these, and then all of these alleyways, too, if you're gonna fix it, you might as well...
And that's, that was my thought here.
Take care of this.
Well, plane.
They right here, and take care of this one right here, and...
Fix, rework the whole Bad Gun Town.
Well, Loretta Murphy, which I...
Oh, yeah.
She worked for the county, retired her a couple of years ago, but anyway, she said, or, her thought was, the commissioner just needed to go in and make a, a border, uh, adjustment. You know, I mean, that, that would clean it all up instead of, but...
Just redo the town limits border, maybe.
So, how many alleyways are there, just this one here?
For us, that's the only one, now, the, you know, there were some other alleyways, like that warehouse is built across an alleyway, so...
Well, now, you're not gonna change that.
No, but I'm just saying that...
Yeah, if you go down a couple pages, um...
Yeah, there, there was...
One more, there you go.
Right there.
So, yeah. So, this is what we're talking, so there was one here, one here.
Yeah.
One here.
Uh-huh.
One here.
Uh-huh, and everything on the other side of...
CC?
CC is not considered Pleasant View.
No.
Oh, it's not?
This, no, just...
So, James is not in Pleasant View, and...
James!
No.
So, where do you live?
He's out there in no man's land.
So, nothing on that side.
You're just not in the subdivision.
That's right, so nothing on that side.
I was gonna say, I nev- I was around there all my life, and I've ne- never known that James was out of town.
So, yeah, so we figured out how many people.
Yeah, we did.
We figured out...
I think there's eight, nine?
Arvale and Howard and us, and the TP people, and the phone company, and Jimmy Johnson, and...
Okay, four, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, yeah.
Nine people.
If you, I'm, I'm oversimplifying, I'm just thinking if you took the nineteen forty-four flat and just redid it without the alleyways, and actually made, instead of those twenty-five-foot things, make it, make it the size of the lots that they actually are, instead of this being four different lots.
Right.
Um, that, that'd be too simple.
That would make sense?
Well, that's, that's...
I mean, 'cause I don't see you can a- actually split that back into four...
What would you do with it this day and age?
At this day and age, yeah.
You couldn't do anything with it.
I mean, if you're, I mean, if you're gonna fix it, fix the whole thing, don't you?
They hadn't split up like, like the city of Cortez did, they were all twenty-five-foot lots that went down your main street and down your major business streets, they were twenty-five-foot...
I think they was twenty-five feet wide and hundred fifty feet...
Hundred fifty, hundred feet or what it was long, exactly.
Maybe we should ask our mapping department what, what do?
As far as refunding the whole town site, I mean, typically, you're just going to, you know, abandon an alleyway, and then you're gonna, you know, your legal scripts are gonna change to lots one through three, and abandon, you know, six, eight-foot eastern, eight-foot portion of abandoned alley, you know, you're just gonna change the legal description in the easiest way, rather than redo the whole shit, but it essentially, it's gonna do the same thing.
Just in a different way, yeah, without cha- without, yeah.
You're now, clock one dash three, six dash eight?
I guess you could, I remember.
I don't know.
But it wouldn't take a long time to do that, to survey and get it, get it all done, it's not that big an area.
Well, I'm agreeing with Commissioner Tell that we send it to those guys, I think they'll help us get it straightened out, and then we won't have to have any worries if there's something hidden there that's...
We're certainly not opposed to what you're trying to do, we just wanna make sure all our ducks are lined up before we, before we say, "Go, go, go," yeah.
And so then who, who, so then does Empire Electric, uh, who, who does the electric stuff?
If they have utility easement, I'm sure...
You already know that.
I'm sure that, uh...
Well, and what we do is, we said, 'cause obviously we'll have to do a public notice for this, so we'll send out agency notice, which will go out to a whole bunch of people, irrigation companies, water companies, electric companies, everyone, for them to, um, make their, make their comments on that.
It shouldn't be that complicated, but like LeAnn said, there's a bunch of people that need to be notified of what we're doing, so that they...
What is this little piece right here, what is...
You know, that just, right now, the, the TP guy has stuff up there, but it's just, it, it just, you know, it was just what the warehouse used, but it's, but...
Yeah, I don't know whether they act- actually own that, or...
He thinks that they own that, the TP guy thinks that they own that.
That he owns it.
That he owns it.
There's a guy that sells TPs.
Have you ever been out through Pleasant View at night?
And see the TPs stand up there with lights inside?
They're pretty, they're very pretty.
It's by Christmas every day.
Limits right here, just the city limits?
Yeah, I almost bought me one.
Well, I think the red line is the town thing, and the other might be electric or something, so utility thing, is that right?
Well, and I think, I think...
Is this a utility line?
Yeah, I said if our other two grandsons live close there, I'd buy one and just put them up there. Yeah, that's right, just for them, them and white's boys to play in, and, but they live in Denver, and I don't, I'm sure Denver wouldn't allow them to put a TP up.
Anyway, so, so we don't know what that does, and, and I think the, the Church of Christ might have, used to have a piece of property on the other side of that red line, on the other side of the warehouse.
Hmm. Where Jeff Wells...
Well, can you just like move that down a little?
Oh, up there, oh, up there.
Right, on the other side of...
Right there?
Right there.
Right there.
Right in here.
Oh, right in there, gotcha.
Right in here someplace, the, the...
Right there.
Yeah, right there. Now, that says Bill Palmer on it now, so maybe he was just letting them use it, church there, I don't know, I don't know how.
Well, Sharon said she thought that, I mean, they still...
Thought that the church still owned that.
Right.
So, I don't know, I, I, yeah, I don't know.
Sounds like we need a Pleasant View.
There's been a lot of things going on in Pleasant View nobody knows about here.
That's right, we're a bunch of...
There's been stuff going on out there that we haven't been told about.
We need a bath.
Supposedly, my dad was, was the self-proclaimed mayor of Pleasant View, and, you know...
But he didn't tell James, cause James was outside the city.
That's right.
That's right, he, he didn't, James wanted to know.
I, I couldn't run for city council.
I didn't live in town.
This is a little teeny kind of thing.
That's funny.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then somebody owns some property up in the middle of Sharon's thing.
You good with that, James?
Yeah, yeah. I think it'll all go, but I think we probably oughta get all, get all our ducks in a row. I don't see any problems with it.
Well, keep us posted, whatever.
You got it.
Thank you.
I think it'll.
Leanne will keep you in it up to your neck.
The whole thing is a blanket deal.
She's sick of us already.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, you know, I think it's a good opportunity to take care of a lot, a lot of it.
Might, might be a lot of housekeeping to be able to go on here.
It'd just be nice to clean it all up at the same time instead of just one piece.
The phone company's building that across.
Right, right, and we're not, you know, we're not trying to, we just would like to be able to buy that brush and stuff from her and.
Yeah, protect, kinda protect your property.
Yeah, and.
And you've got a willing seller on the other side of it.
Right, and we talked to her and she's willing to do it and she's good to go and she said, just let her know, so.
If you guys would straighten out this little thing right out here in your field.
She would really love that, probably.
What is that, a block of land?
Yeah, Dan Bell's, yeah.
Well, he, he bought it for taxes and I don't know who, who originally owned it before him. I think, uh. He was, that Uncle Alan was friends with.
Delano.
Perkins, Perkins, I think Perkins had, had, maybe at one time had bought a little ground in there to build a house or a house.
Is that crazy?
So Dan Bell's got it sitting right in the middle of Sharon's field.
There's a lot of them.
Oh, yeah.
So it's crazy. Thank you for your time.
You bet your lungs.
Okay, so put, put March eighth on your.
March eighth on the ballot or something.
Yes, please.
The Ides of March will be here.
You got it, March eighth.
Yes.
Okay.
What time?
Six P M. Same place.
In this room.
Right here, six P M, March eighth.
Okay, thank you.
I've got my own blue equal. It work on you?
It's a breeze blow.
Always with yours.
Does Sharon just farm over that piece right there?
She leases it. I don't know who bought this.
You know, I mean, but.
That probably came from old William, Oliver Bell's dad.
She does. Yeah, whoever's leasing it leases all that.
Oh, and then does they have to count out this little kind of piece, the belt? I mean, I don't know, it's just weird.
Probably have to give them a few bushels of wheat.
Long as no one's suing somebody else. There's just so many little weird pieces.
I know.
What, what is the yellow line?
That's the town, is that the border of the town, no?
No, we're trying, we're working on that. We're not sure how that ended up there. So that, you know, this is kind of a good thing to.
It's gonna open up, it opens up several issues, isn't it, yeah.
But you might be able to clean up a bunch of.
Yeah.
Well, and you know, that's what we're kind of hoping is that, you know, through this process that we can.
Yeah.
Isn't that the issue, is the yellow line?
No, because if you go. It does, but it's not, unfortunately. I'm not sure if, when Loretta was here, if she put that. When she was housekeeping.
The G I S, yeah.
If she's put that on there for a reason, yeah, so you gotta figure what, yeah.
There's too many uncertainties there to pull the trigger, in my opinion, until.
Well, there, this is.
Know what's going on.
Yeah.
When you look right there.
There could be somebody that has utility running through there. We vacated and then they come back and say, what the heck do you think you're doing?
Cause I'm thinking like with red lines or purple lines, there's, it does this go with that? Okay, the only other thing that I wanted to chat with you about really quickly before I go back to my cave. Is that, um, at our last planning commission meeting, the, the planning commission is really ambitious towards, um, getting a general county sales tax. Um, they wanna make sure that they get that money before it's plucked up by the city of Cortez. Um, I did talk to Kim. We have till the end of July to get that done. Um, we would like to, uh, go back to our languages that we had before and maybe massage that a little bit and present you guys with things as we're coming up with them. Are you, is that okay?
It is with me.
For just the general sales tax?
Just for the county general.
County sales tax, yeah.
And we thought we could write up, write it up like maybe two or three different ways where you could look at it where, um, you know, those funds came, uh, before the board of county commissioners each year to be. You know, allotted to certain areas or.
How it would be used.
Or just a general fund, general fund tax.
But, you know, I think, I think, I think the major thing is, and the planning commission feels like the major thing is, is that the public doesn't want it to feel like it's gonna go towards padding our wallets.
Mm-hmm.
But caring for the county.
Mm-hmm.
I think I did some history on previous sales tax elections. Did I give you that?
Okay.
Of what? When they tried to do it for this or for that or?
And it failed.
Yeah, okay, you already have that.
And you got specific, doing it for a specific purpose.
Right. Well, or specifically saying, we're not giving ourselves prices.
Yeah, I got, yeah.
You know, cause I think that that, that kinda turns.
So is the board gonna come in full and, and be the ones presenting and advocating for the sales tax in a public hearing? So the taxpayers know that it's be- coming from the planning and zoning board.
Yes, and they also have said that they want to do, uh, public meetings in the same district that we did our master rezoning plan and going and talking to. Each district about why and what for.
Good, that's. That's very ambitious and I'm very, that's good, and I'm pleased at that.
Okay.
Or I am anyway.
Yes.
Cause we're gonna have to do something. Don't know, I haven't heard that yet.
Um, it's a little over one. It's like one point two that we're allowed.
Yeah, that's all we can do in one.
But, you know, we, we just have a really hard time with, um, like, go economic development, forgetting nothing. You know, so I mean, you can promote, and, and it's the, I mean, it's the landowners and, and the house owners and people like that that are paying us, you know. Regardless of what we're getting out there, so I mean, it'd be nice to have.
Benefit from some of the economic activity in our county.
Well, yeah, and the people that are driving through going to Mesa Verde or, you know, yeah, so it's, give us our blessing, give us your blessing, we will try again.
I will get behind you on that.
I'll see, I'll be ahead after I hear their presentation because there's lots of this.
Okay, so you want us to come and meet with you and present to you our possible verbiage?
I want that board to come and when I have somebody come to me and say, you're trying to raise my taxes, I can say that that board is the ones that came and said that they wanted to raise it for this. And because they said what they said, I believe what they said and so I'm for it. That's what I would like to do. I, I don't wanna just say, okay, I'm gonna go for it. Because they said, without them coming presenting it, so that I can tell those community members that, that will come after me. That they're the ones that brought it and said this, but we're gonna have to get honest here and what the honest part is, is that there's only such. An amount of sales tax you can get. And what the honest thing is, is, is the county gonna get it before the city does? Okay, let's be honest with the folks out there. It has nothing to do with, it's, there's, we got the seventeenth highest municipality. Uh, that has seventeen highest sales tax in the state of Colorado out of two hundred and seventy-one, so I did some research on that. When James made his statement about sales tax, about the city being high, there, and they said. It was on K S J D, they tried to retract and say, well, it's not that much, you know, there's seventeen down the list. Well, there's two hundred and seventy-one, I Googled it, there's two hundred and seventy-one towns. So it's being seventeen, that means we're in the ninety-five percent. That means we're in the, we're in the five percent of the highest of all the two hundred and seventy-one towns. So who is that five percent? Who are those?
Seventeen.
Taurine.
Aspen.
Aspen.
Vale.
Okay, it's not Duck Creek.
Nope.
It's.
It's not Manscresson, it's not Delores.
So you have to put that in perspective about, and we're one of the only counties, I'm just finding out because of your statement, that taxes food, and I think that's wrong. I, I do not think that there should be a sales tax.
Well, that, is that, is that's only on food that comes out of a restaurant, is it not? It's not your grocery store food. No, there's some exemption.
The city tax is on groceries.
It's on groceries as well.
The state isn't.
State, okay, that's it, okay.
So that's why I want that board to do their work. There's a lot of things to this.
Okay, well, I will set up a work session and we'll get a presentation ready for you.
I, I would almost bet that when this legislature's done, that there's some state sales tax coming down the line.
Very well be.
Could be wrong, but I, I would almost bet that there will be.
But I'm with Commissioner Tell and Commissioner Lambert. It's not fair to the landowners to burden all of the taxes. It's just not fair, you know, and then it's not fair that a landowner in the city of Cortez cannot vote on.
City.
City count, city issues. It's just not fair, but yet municipality residents can vote on county issues, so.
There's some inequities out there.
Yes.
Well, and again, I, I digress to e- economic development as well. It's, it's really hard for us to find that want to.
Mm-hmm.
You know, when you're, I mean, it's, it, when there's nothing backing it up. You know, you can promote as much economic development as you want, but we're not getting anything out of it.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, county doesn't get that. Make some commercial building assessments and stuff like that.
That's why so many people actually have their business out in the county is so that they don't have to pay that, you know, so, okay.
Well, one more that, one of the, is, so the board, this board of county commissioners advocated harder for the Phil's World Trail expansion. I would say we did ten times as much as the city of Cortez.
Oh, yeah.
And if the people only knew, okay, we, we don't get sales tax, we don't get nothing off of that. The only reason we did is because of our community.
Right.
And we knew that maybe somebody might buy a house or build a house.
It's an expanding asset in our community, but we don't benefit monetarily from that one.
Where was the city? Where was the city when we went through all that for five years?
They were wanting, they were sitting there saying, we want an M L P on you.
Yeah.
They were, they were pushing, saying they wanted the master leasing plan. Which just, why don't you poke me right in the eye with your finger?
I've got.
Yeah, well, we got issues.
Well, we're trying to work on them slowly.
Good, good, I'm, I'm, come at us with something good. I'm anxious.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment?
Did you have that, this M L U or the position statement, something from Weld?
Oh, yeah, didn't I email that to you? Yeah, did you get that?
I have it.
Yeah, it's that letter from Weld County.
Oh. Yeah, we've, uh. I was, I was sent, uh, this came, I think, from, uh, C C I, uh, to, uh, a lot of the counties in the, in, uh, the state of Colorado. Concerning our childcare assistance program and our Colorado Works program and Weld County wants that, wants the state to hold up on making a decision on. How that, they're wanting to change some things in that C C cap, uh. And I'm, to be honest with you, I'm not that familiar with the ins and outs of that department, how it's run, so I ran that letter by Josiah. And asked him to comment on that for me, to tell me what he felt about that letter and he, he said that the position in Montezuma County that. He's positioned where the changes would not affect him as much as they would a county like Weld or some of the other counties. And he, he feels like he would be okay, but he would prefer not to, he would prefer for us to stand with Weld County and support their opposition to the state doing this. So that's, that's what I brought to the commissioners and that's the, the letter that, uh, Weld County has asked us all to sign on to and, and, uh, supporting. Uh, stopping the state from implementing these changes to that C cap and, and Colorado Works, uh, proposition.
And I would, uh, Josiah and Commissioner Tell's report, I'm, I would be for, for the reasons as well.
After, after reading that, state's trying to.
Yeah, they're trying to readjust allocations and, yeah, they're gonna make them give up a bunch of their, I think, some of their reserves and make them do some stuff, but, uh. Josiah said it wouldn't harm him directly, but it's gonna harm a lot of others. I think in the municipalities is where it's gonna be, in a larger population area, it's gonna be very, very tough on them, so.
They just wanted, Weld just wants to know if they can say that we support them, right?
Right, exactly. This is just going in and saying that we, we support their position in opposing this change. So I would make a motion that we send a letter in support of Weld's County's opposition to the state human services department.
I think this just requires a signature, doesn't it?
Second.
Uh, yep, there you go.
Should I print this?
Yeah, I don't think you need to send a letter. I think just.
Just sign on to that electronically?
I don't know, which is the best way.
I don't know what the date is that they need.
They need it by the fourteenth of February. I'm pretty sure I read that, uh.
That's Wednesday.
That's this Wednesday. Yeah.
Can we just make the motion that, then that if, however it is, with whatever form that they want, whether electronically or signed, that. We are allowing that to happen and then when we find out.
Uh, John didn't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
So moved, we will, we will submit our support to Weld County of this, uh, position they're taking, uh, in regard to the. Colorado State Human Services Department in opposition of their changes to the Colorado Works and C cap.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to offer our support to Weld County, uh, in there. I think it's a resolution to, in, to oppose the. Or to, I think it's to delay and it's not.
Yeah, to delay or to, to not approve the changes that they, the state wants to make to Colorado Works and C cap.
Delay the changes that the s- the state's wanting to make to the Colorado Works and through the C cap. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I take that draft off of it and print it, just submit it on behalf of, just put Montezuma County on there.
I think that'd work.
Can you pull it off of their?
Mm-hmm.
Copy?
I was able to. But it doesn't, if it, at the bottom, it just says on behalf of.
Just put Montezuma County and post that.
Okay. I can do that.
Thank you, ma'am.
You all right?
Yeah.
Driving too fast, you need to slow down.
It's cause you got a beanie on or that's the problem, I mean, it's all your fault.
No, don't you wave your hand over here at me, you just, you hit that pointer over there where it belongs, yeah.
I can't help it, oh.
I'll take.
These days you're gonna get speeding.
I know, I would, I know.
He's digging.
You won't be as honest.
He's digging himself a hole right over here and, and it'll come back to get him.
It'll come back to get him.
Oh, Larry Dawn.
Five years, she's like picture perfect, nothing. She makes one mistake.
Yeah.
Just it's.
Is there a, is anybody wants to speak on the public comment session?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We are. Forward to.
I put the third page on the top.
Okay, you think we all should sign this?
I don't know if you want to, but is it your only one signature line?
Well, it just.
Doesn't really have, it just says submit it on behalf of Montezuma County and.
I would just have the chairman.
Have the chairman sign it? Yeah, just sign it with chairman.
And send that back to.
I would send that back to the lady that, uh, sent it to us.
Allison Daly.
And that would be Allison Daly, mm-hmm.
C.I., okay.
Mm-hmm. I think that's the appropriate place.
So I'm gonna scan this, Kim, and I'll give this to you.
Yeah.
Can you go do that right?
Okay, thank you, Melissa.
Does anybody have anything else?
I'd move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
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 Never did really snow, did it?
Not much, man. It just spitted and spitted and got a little dam.
So next meeting is the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, next meeting's twenty-sixth, yep.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Um, how, how, how does the E.L.D., you may have mentioned that earlier, how, how does that affect the county?
By fifty cents a pound, the value of the cattle?
So they're gonna have to comply with that? How or why?
So giving the example, well, I, I told you the cattle must, but. The cattle trucks say I'm gonna ship, ship, uh, Blackmers cattle.